Twenty-one, um, it's called order. Can we please have a roll call?
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Uh, everyone who's able, please hand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America, the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the council meeting from May four. Thank you, Mayor. I do have the copy of the meeting minutes here, and I believe everyone has a copy of that. Seeing as there is no interjection of anybody wanting to make any changes, I would like to make a motion to the meeting minutes of May fourth, twenty-twenty-one, as written, and to dispense with the reading.
One second.
Uh, roll call?
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
I actually don't know. Because I was not here for the joint meeting, but I was here for that.
We don't have to pass the joint one because that gets passed next year.
Perfect. I, yes.
Just say yes. Hey, Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, special reports. This is really a special report, but we do have a protest regarding a contract that you've done with the City Council, so, um, please come up, state your name off the record and your address, and then if, you know, how lo- how long do you plan on going?
Um, I'm thinking five to eight minutes.
Five to eight minutes is fine. That's excellent. Thanks.
Can I take off my mask or?
Yeah, whatever's convenient for you. That's fine.
Okay. First and foremost, thanks for the opportunity to defend both myself and my company, KCS Contracting. Uh, my name is Keith Maholsky. Um, I've lived at sixteen-one-zero-three Normandy South, Perrysburg, Ohio, for over nineteen years. Um, I'm here today, today to discuss the decision from Perrysburg City Council to allow, to not allow KCS to complete the remodeling of the fire station. I specifically want to discuss the letter from Perrysburg's legal counsel, which is the first pa- paper that I gave to everyone in that pamphlet I handed out. And I quote from that, that letter, "To award a contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder," end of quote. We are here today to discuss if KCS is a res- and I quote, "responsible bidder" based on the experience bidders, and I quote again, "financial condition, conduct and performance on previous contracts, facilities, management skills, and ability to execute the contract properly." Specifically, Perrysburg has found KCS not responsible for two different reasons. One was a financial review, and the other is for conduct and performance on previous contracts. I want to go on record that I believe this is simply a union versus non-union argument. Clearly, the city has been provided with information that is untrue, biased, and very misleading. I'm gonna start with number one, financial review. Through my attorney, I was given the documentation that was provided to Perrysburg City Council. The first letter was KCS credit report. You do not have to go very far to realize it is not accurate, nor it hasn't been updated in years. For that, I take full responsibility. However, when I apply for credit, it is always given to me. Items that are not accurate. Number one, reported sales. In that report, it says my sales are one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, when they're actually over eleven, eleven million dollars per year. Number two, employees. Number says six, but actually, there are over fifty of us. Timeliness on, on bill pay. The second paperwork I gave you was, um, letters of rec- or, uh, from my four main suppliers, showing I'm in good standing with all those suppliers. It also gives you the volume of business we do with those suppliers, which is, quite frankly, millions of dollars. Old tax liens. That's exactly what they are. It's old and have been paid in full with interest and released. I want to let everyone know, paid in full, I'm sorry, as a state has a right to lien over outstanding balance or assessment, I too have a right to fight both the rates and amounts owed, if not accurate. I am not able to discuss any more on this issue for fear it will be twisted around by the union at a later date. I will show an example of that later in this conversation. Plain and simple, Keith Maholsky and KCS Contracting are current on all of their taxes. As I have started the process of updating my credit report, however, this how, this old information should not be used against me to judge my current financial status. I have given co- you a copy of my bonding capability that far exceeds the cost of this project that is also in that pamphlet. I have also included my recently signed confirmation of my one-million-dollar credit line. I assure you, neither of these would be possible with bad credit. Moving on to conduct and old performance on previous contracts. There are specific mentions about Park Brothers. Unfortunately, I have confidentiality, confidentiality and disparagement clause that applies to both parties, so KCS cannot discuss the details of the dispute. However, facts that are presented are simply misrepresented. Those are in the, the first letter from, uh, your legal counsel. The statement, and I quote, "In order to remove KCS Contracting, Park Brothers requested an inspection from the billing inspector," end of quote. Once again, this information is false and misleading. KCS was off, off the, the project, and it wasn't complete for several weeks when the billing inspector arrived. B, the pictures are not from the billing inspector as stated in the letter from council. They are from the carpenter's business agent that they presented to the city of Toledo in a city council meeting. That is all I can say about the Park Brothers. Again, I have a confidentiality agreement. Midwest Church. KCS completed all three of the projects for Midwest Church, and when payment was due, we were forced to litigate for payment. Midwest countersued, and the matter was settled out of court with payment made to KCS. Mechanics lien from LNW Supply for non-payment from general contractor. Lean on the property worked, and we were paid within a week of the lien being processed. The fourth and last issue was Bogner Construction. KCS started the project without a performance bond. When asked to furnish one after the project started, KCS was not able to do so. KCS was not able to complete the project due to the bond issue. KCS was forced to go to litigation and was paid for the portion of the project that was completed. I want to be clear here. KCS has been forced to litigate on two separate occasions. On both occasions, although the defendant had to counterclaim, in the end, they settled out of court, paying KCS for the work that was completed. And now onto the positive of KCS con- of positive KCS's conduct and performance in previous contracts that others do not want the city of Perrysburg to know. Also in your pamphlet, I started with four references that were given to Hal Munger, the architect on this project, ranging from one million, eight-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand to two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars at Owens Tech. Hal himself told me that all of them came back good. For, for sake of time, I have only added two more references letters, and I'll explain why. Ambry McLogic of Art Construction, that we are completing a continental bakery for KCS portion of five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. I use her as a reference because this project was recently picketed by the carpenters' union, and the story was on the news and in the newspaper. The union claimed that we're, they were picketing because I pay unfair wages between ten dollars and twenty-five dollars per hour, which is, again, a lie. Everyone knows nobody works for ten dollars an hour. And, and I, they constantly recruit my employees. If you don't think we pay a competitive wage, you're just being misled. Doesn't work like that. Please read her letter carefully, very carefully. And if you don't think there are politics involved, please read the letter that's attached to it from Sherrod Brown, from Senator Sherrod Brown, who also has concerns on why I pay my employees. The second reference is from Richie Otto, from Otto Construction. This letter is from the new four-story home to suites in Bowling Green that is right off the expressway. We completed for our portion roughly one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I use him because he worked hand-in-hand with the billing inspector from Wood County. Please feel free to call him and the Lucas County Billing Inspector to see if they have ever had any issues with KCS other than Andover, which, again, we weren't allowed to finish. I have included a list of the twenty-one current projects we, we have in progress, ranging in value, value from one million, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to twenty-two-thousand, with the combined value of four million, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I will have to give you contact information for any of those projects as references. My last reference is the projects we have completed directly from El Anzer and Perrysburg, which include, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, the Perrysburg High School gymnasium expansion for El Anzer's for fourteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty, we did the painting there. In two thousand and eighteen, at the junior high, we did the painting and ceiling replacement of all the, uh, all the hallways. That contract was eighty, a total of eighty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Peels being issued directly from Perrysburg City Schools. In two thousand and eighteen, Perrysburg Pool, um, we painted the pool by first removing the coating. They had a constant peeling problem in that pool. We were able to give them a five-year warranty on that process, and we have had zero phone calls back. And again, that was compared, completed in two thousand and eighteen for a total of forty-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars, with, again, no callbacks. In two thousand and nineteen, we were again hired to do the Perrysburg High School STEM lab. We were basically a small GC on the project. Our total contract was forty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Total of these projects over the last few years for Perrysburg is one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-eighty-six. I find it ironic that amount is more than what you guys are telling me I'm now not capable of completing. Again, to be clear, I'm aware, I'm aware of any issues, and, and just recently bid two more projects for the school system. Lastly, I would like to talk about my integrity and a comment that was made in front of Toledo City Council. The comment, and I quote, "defects are respons- are the responsibility of the inspector to discover," end of quote, was taken totally out of context to both yourselves and the Sentinel Tribune. I was referring to the argument that the, that my drywallers are not responsible for the structural integrity of a building. The point is, there is an inspection process on all jobs before the drywall can be hung. That inspection is completed by the building inspector on every project that has a permit. My drywaller is not qualified, just like nobody on this board is qualified, to tell what the gauge of a metal stud is. Yet they were saying that my guys should be qualified to do that. They aren't. That's not their job. When they're told to hang drywall, that's their job. That was the point I was trying to make. I assure you that there are no drywallers qualified to inspect structural integrity, licensed or not, as said by the union. I hope all of you realize that what is at stake for KCS and myself. In the ci- if the city of Perrysburg rules that KCS is not responsible, the union will not only publicize these findings like they have on projects like Andover, they will also go from project to project, denying a little bit on saying, and I quote, you can quote me on this, Perrysburg says they're not responsible. I simply cannot let that happen. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate your, uh, dutifulness to provide us the information and documentation that you've provided. I think it's, uh, I think it's very fair for council to review and get it to our lawyer to take under advisement. I wouldn't anticipate the council to take any action or, or take any choice at this time, but I do appreciate you coming here. And I think articulately stating your belief as to why you should get the projects, I very much appreciate it.
I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Uh, we, we can keep these, right?
Yeah, just over all your copies.
Thank you very much. Uh, letters of communication and citizen concern. I think we, another of that, okay? Uh, we'll go on to administrative reports then. Um, couple, a couple of points first. As everyone knows, um, there's been some developments from the CDC and the governor since we last met, and, uh, the administration is reviewing all those. And to the extent that things could be updated, like the pool and, uh, some park programming, uh, you've been advising that, and we've tried to make some public notice about all of those information. And also, we'll be reviewing how best to open buildings and, uh, kind of start over with, uh, the structures of, uh, what buildings we'll open, how we'll open them, uh, uh, consistent with the guidelines and the recommendations. Similarly, we will also do that regarding staff. Most of the staff has already basically been returning to work on a regular schedule, but we will, uh, continue to do that consistent with the guidelines. So, uh, if anybody has any questions, uh, contact the administration. I'd also like to take this opportunity to, uh, thank Kim Clure and Fred Butler. For those of you who have been around for a while, you will know that they were integ- integrally involved with Larry Dillon. Uh, Kim was on council, and Frank was with OI, creation of Love's Commons. And they both, um, have served, they continue to serve on the, uh, Architectural Review Committee. And so, um, Larry Dillon is, uh, coming off that committee, but, uh, I spoke, had some communication with him, and he wanted to make sure that, uh, the Frank and Kim were both recognized for their, uh, commitment and service to the community, and I said I would be happy, happy to do that because, as everyone, uh, who has had the opportunity to go out to Love's Commons knows, great addition to the city, and it would not have happened but for their vision and, um, for their diligence. So, uh, we want to recognize them for their, their hard work there. Um, city administrator?
No report.
Finance director?
No report today.
Law director?
No report.
Thank you very much. President of council?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
All right, we're cruising on. Uh, finance committee?
Thank you, Mayor.
Break our street, Karen.
Pardon?
We're gonna break our street, Karen.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I, I'm not, uh, I'm gonna take a little bit of time. Uh, the Finance and Economic Development Committee met on eleven, uh, May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Meeting was called to order at five-thirty PM by Chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were Deborah Born, Tim McCarthy, and myself. Also present were Bridget Cabot, city administrator, Kate Sandretto, law director, Dave Krebs, finance director, Amber Rathburn, deputy finance director, and Steve Bronder, income tax commissioner. Uh, the approval of the minutes. I stated that hearing, uh, no objections, the minutes of the April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting were approved. Ms. Born said that she was abstaining because they were already approved at the city council meeting. Finance directors report, the committee reviewed expenditures greater than five thousand for the month of April. There were questions regarding police training, equipment, health insurance claims, and payments to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. There was a brief discussion about the hotel tax and how it was distributed. Mr. Krebs reported that the balance in Health Insurance Fund as of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one was ninety-three thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents, which is down from March. He said that some fairly big claims were paid last month. Ms., Ms. Sandretto stated that the first piece in the street tree assessment and the lighting assessment, the resolution of necessity, were approved last month. She said the next step in the process is the ordinance to proceed and the ordinance of approving the assessment. Ms. Born asked why we do these assessments instead of the costs coming from the general fund. Uh, Mr. Krebs said that he strongly recommends against eliminating the assessments. He said the Ohio Revised Code allows it, and by assessing it, it ensures that these items are the city's responsibility. And the committee agreed three-zero to forward the ordinances on to city council. The tax commissioners report, Mr. Bronder reported that tax collections for the month of April were just shy of two-point-two million dollars. He said that it was not a typical April since the due date was extended. He said that we are up four percent over April of twenty-twenty, but that was also not a typical April. He said that year-to-date collections are seven-point-one million dollars, which is up four-point-one percent over last year. He said that it'll probably be some time after July until we can do a real comparison to twenty-twenty. In other business, Ms. Born said that Buckeye State Bank coming to Perrysburg is a great thing. She said they also plan to have other businesses at the bank. Uh, she said she's heard maybe there was gonna be a local coffee house, which, uh, we had that groundbreaking, uh, last week, I think, sometime. So there being no further business, the meeting adjourned at five-forty-seven. And I have four pieces of legislation to introduce. Two are ordinances determining to proceed, and the other two are the ordinances for the levy renewal. So if there's no obje- objections, I'll induce them all together. Yeah, that looks good. So, I would like to introduce ordinances thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for their readings by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call?
Hey, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-one. An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement to certain public places in the city by lighting. Ordinance number thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. An ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of lighting streets, alleys, ways, and other public places in the city of Perrysburg. Ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand and twenty-one. An ordinance determining to, determining to proceed with the removal and special treatment of shade trees and controlling the blight and disease of same, and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets and within public rights of way of the city of Perrysburg. And ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. An ordinance levying special assessments for the removal and special treatment of shade trees and controlling the blight and disease of same, and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets and within public rights of way of the city of Perrysburg.
I move that ordinances thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
Hey, Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the next meeting for the Finance and Economic Development Committee would be Tuesday, June eighth, at five-thirty PM. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, safety committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The safety committee did not meet, um, but our next scheduled meeting is May the twenty-fifth, Tuesday, at six PM.
Thank you. Uh, the recreation committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a meeting, and this is the report for the regular meeting of the Recreation Committee for May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Present were Chairwoman Deborah Born, Counselors Dean of Attorney, and Jonathan Smith. Chairwoman Deborah Born called the meeting to order in council chambers at six-thirty PM. After a roll call and the pledge of allegiance, the, the administration's report of April thirteenth was approved three to zero with the modification requested by Chairwoman Born that she mentioned that Will Harbauer had been elected Recording Secretary by, uh, by PrAC. Notice citizen concerns were presented. Full business. Mr. Smith reported that he had a discussion with the administration about a location for an unleashed dog park. They are working on a location within the city of Perrysburg, possibly Orleans Park. He said, hopefully, the con- the conversations will continue. Under new business, Chairwoman Born reported that she had attended the most recent meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, PrAC, at which the committee had made recommendations to the committee, two by motion and one as a suggestion. The first recommendation passed by motion was that Orleans Parking Lot not be paved. Todd France, an engineer and vice chair of PrAC, he was chairing the meeting because the chair was absent, did a survey of his own time and expense over the course of a week during the walleye season on parking usage in Orleans Park, Maple Street, Hood Park, Fort Meggs River Access, and Davis Overlook. Below are his findings over the week in question. W means Wood County license plate. NW means confirmed non-wood county plate. U means unknown. Maple Street, six W, twenty-one NW, then one U. Hood Park, one W, O-N-W, and then O-U. Orleans Park, lower, two W, eighteen NW, then S-U. Orleans Park, upper, one W, two N-W-O-U. Fort Meggs, zero W, and two N-W, two U. Davis Overlook, two W-N-W, and then three U. Mr. France had also included Buttonwood Park in his survey as a comparison, as though it is in, even though it is in Perrysburg Township, for Buttonwood, his numbers were ten W, sixty-five NW, and twenty-two U. Chairwoman Born commented that Buttonwood is by far the most congested access point to the river, even though it is not paved because the river is higher at that point, and people accessing the river find it convenient regardless of surface. The overall conclusion from this data was that most of the people using the parking areas were non-resident adult ma- adult males. In addition, most of these areas are in the one-hundred-year flood plain, which means they are often covered with water and ice during the winter, which would require continual annual maintenance. In conclusion, PrAC recommended that Orleans Park Parking Lot not be paved and the money allocated to this be used in some other manner. PrAC's other two recommendations were to open the p- public bathrooms in the parks passed by motion and a natural walking path to be built around Three Meadows Pond, not a motion, but a suggestion. Returning to the discussion of paving Orleans Park, Chairwoman Born reported that Mr. France also talked to one of the managers in the parking lot and asked if it mattered to him if it was paved. The gentleman responded that since he didn't live here, he didn't care one way or the other. Ms. Born stated that she would like a motion to send this back to the finance committee for further review. Ms. Matroni objected to the action. She acknowledged Mr. France for his work, but then stated that the survey was statistically invalid because it was only in one day in duration several times during the meeting. It had already been stated that the survey had been done over in a week. She stated that the Fort Meggs River access area had been flooded during the recent bad winter, and it had not been damaged at that time. Chairwoman Born stated that during the forty-four years she's lived in Perrysburg, the Orleans Park Parking Lot has never been paved. Ms. Matroni stated that this was now proposed because of the zoning. She stated that she did not want a motion, but had no objection to Ms. Born bringing, Born's bringing this to the finance committee, of which she is a member. Mr. Smith said he supports the paving of Orleans Park because he has said it's required by the city code. He said he, he said he had previously discussed paving issues at Rotary Park and felt that those issues adopted there as well. He stated that some of the proposed future uses of Orleans Park would require paving. Chairwoman Born stated that she is very opposed to spending one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars on parking for what is basically a seasonal activity. There being no objection, she plans to take her issue personally to the finance committee. Ms. Matroni stated that she does not care whether or not the park was primarily used by non-residents because Perrysburg taxpayer money should be used to provide entertainment for them. Mr. Smith commented that another reason for paving the parking lot is the fact that access from Win- Western Reserve Road is sometimes congested, and paving the upper portion of the lot may alleviate, help alleviate this. Chairwoman Born then brought up PrAC's recommendation to open up the park bathrooms. Ms. Matroni answered that this is a service committee issue, and they are working on it. Chairwoman Born then brought up PrAC's suggestion proposed by PrAC member Tony Wade of a natural walking path around Three Meadows Pond. Mr. Smith asked that the idea been reviewed, had been reviewed by the administration. PrAC report. Most of this was covered by the discussion of PrAC's three proposals. Jessica Kemp has resigned from PrAC, so a new member and a chair will be needed. Other business, Ms. Matroni asked some questions about the staffing at the, at the swimming pool. Chairwoman Born stated that various citizens have asked her why swimming pools currently limited to city residents. She said she believed it was because of, she said she believed it was because of the COVID restrictions. Ms. Matroni disagreed and said that the pool is paid for by taxpayer money, and township residents should not be allowed to use it. Meeting adjourned at six-fifty-seven PM. Next regular meeting on Tuesday, June eighth, at six-thirty PM. Report prepared by Deborah Born, Chairwoman, May eighth, excuse me, May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just wanted to do a couple of clarifications from the actual meeting. As, uh, many of the council members and the public do not actually watch or attend the meetings, I just wanted to do some clarification on some of the things that are being reported. Uh, first and foremost, I just would like to make a-
First and foremost, I just would like to make a note that Aaron Fineley is the vice chair of the PrAC committee and he was actually chairing that meeting, so I don't want to...
Mr. Smith, I beg to differ with you on that.
I actually watched it.
Aaron was at the meeting and I was there and it was Mr. France.
I think the meeting was...
Let's have an order here, please. I'm sorry. If we disagree, Jonathan's got the mic, let him finish. You can speak when he's finished. And if you feel a need to speak as well, but let's just go on with that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did watch the PrAC committee and it was mentioned numerous points that Aaron was chairing the meeting as he is the current vice chair of PrAC. A couple of points of clarification as well. It said that hopefully conversations will continue. I had mentioned that conversations will be continuing. Hopefully, we'll have something soon in regards to the unleashed dog park and that is mentioned around the three-minute mark of the video. Also, it's mentioned in here as well that the survey was done over the course of a week. It was actually done in one day on April 10th at one instance that was mentioned in PrAC by Todd France, as well as the documents that he actually handed out. I can pass out a copy of that to the rest of council should you guys desire to see that. So it was a one-time look at the park during one moment of the day. A couple other things as well. One other thing, saying that I feel about an issue, you know, according to my wife, I don't feel about much, but I do say that I believe that these issues for the city code apply here as per our code, we require all the businesses as well as our residents to have paved driveways as well as parking lots and that is the sole reason that this was brought up in Orleans due to the non-conforming use and the requirements we put on these businesses and residents. I believe it is important that we hold the city to the same bar that we hold everyone else. And then as well, regarding the accessibility from Western Reserve, as anybody who's tried to go into Orleans Park, that is a slow turn in there due to the bump and the race to get out. So one of the conversations I've actually had with the administrations on this is this paving is going to allow that ingress and egress to be a little more even, so you can pull in a little quicker and get out a little more quickly to help with the safety issues there. So that is just a few things to hear that I just wanted to point out for those who are not in attendance to know what is more of what I said and some of the facts regarding the actual PrAC meeting as well. So, thank you.
Finish, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
I would simply like to say in conclusion that this is a report, this is not a transcript. It says to do a report in the rules of council, which I do every time I do a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make some comments. Well, it is a reported thing during council, so it will be on the record. I'd like to point out that I did not object to bringing up the paving of New Orleans Parks and Finance. In fact, I encouraged you to do that. I did object to taking it to council first, which was your original recommendation. I never said Perrysburg taxpayers' money should be used to provide entertainment for them. I said, who cares who uses our parks? They should be open to everyone. Furthermore, you're doing a survey based upon license plates to determine whether people are from, where people are from is wrong because an auto with out-of-state plate or stickers or out-of-county could be a new Perrysburg resident or a resident using a rental or company card. After that, you noted that I said we should provide entertainment for non-residents. You later go on to say that I said township residents not be allowed to use a city pool. What I said was that if the city is restricting the sale of pool passes and how many people can use a pool at any one time, we should explore a reduced price of free passes for city residents. Perrysburg residents using the pool should be a priority and I would hate to see a city resident not being able to use it because they were bumped by a township resident. I then went on to say that if things open up and there are leftover passes, then township residents should be more than welcome to buy them. None of my questions were about staffing concerns. As I've stated before, a committee report or notes should be objective based upon what is actually said with no personal biases, innuendos, or slights.
Yours is very... Ms. Matroni, I have no bias toward you or anyone up here on city council and I quite frankly don't have, but I do report what happened at the meeting and that's a report. Said and done.
Thankfully, the pool was resolved because we're allowed to... So, thank you very much. Okay, so that's the end of your report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Planning and zoning?
Thank you, Your Honor. We met on May 12th at 5:30. All community members are present. Also, President Kate Sandretto, our law director, and Brody Walters, our planning and zoning administrator. My minutes are in a really scratched-up draft. It's not ready for distribution, so I'll give you kind of a Reader's Digest version and a final copy of the minutes before we decide.
Give it a report.
What's that?
Sorry, give it a report.
Yeah. I can say simply, our sole action that night really was to discuss and approve a recommendation to the planning commission that hedge and screen plantings and there be no height limitations on hedge and screen plantings in the rear, on the rear lot line and also on the side lot line, the mid-point of the side lot line. This recommendation is for all districts R1 through R5, also A1, RM, I1, I2, and I and S zoning. As I know, we have the planning commission and then returned to us for a public hearing. There was further discussion about what we do at quarter lots, the two front yards, and then there was finally discussion about possibly allowing green plantings or green screening on the rear lot line of commercially zoned properties and you will read about that in the minutes. And that essentially constituted our work at night. We will meet again on June 9th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Personnel Committee.
No report. Our next meeting is this Thursday, the 20th, at 5:00 PM.
Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing the trend for the personnel, there is no report and our next scheduled meeting is on May 26th at 6:30 PM.
Mr. Smith, I do have a question for you. Since all of us, or at least some of us, perhaps listened to the meeting that was on from Team A, they made a resolution in favor of what Mr. Campbell was talking about. Any progress?
I appreciate you bringing that up because we do have H2 Ohio coming to the Public Utilities meeting on May 26th as well. They're going to give the status on what the state is doing. So as we continue to do our diligence, I would recommend we wait to, let's hear what the state of Ohio is doing through the H2 Ohio initiative with all the funds that our tax dollars are going toward with that as well. And then hopefully we can see where the rest of Public Utilities and the council has said to that.
Have you heard back from Dr. Campbell of whether he's going to be present?
I sent him a message and I have not heard back at this time.
So he's been invited?
He's been invited.
Okay, yeah, because that dialogue between those two would certainly probably be helpful and guidance.
But yes, I did invite him and so, but for anybody who would be interested in coming out to see what H2 Ohio is doing for the water quality in Lake Erie and the river and the riveroushead area, I would highly recommend coming out and we'll have a fun time.
Thank you. I think it's an important topic.
Yes.
Service Committee.
No report. Next meeting is Wednesday, May 6th at 5:30.
Other business to come before this council?
Just make sure you register for your chance to win a million dollars if you got your first dose, apparently. Maybe we should remind our citizens of that. Hopefully a lucky winner, maybe from Perrysburg.
Any council member will have to disclose on their ethics.
Yeah.
That would be part of this culture.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for you. Do you know when we will be able to stop wearing masks in here based on the governor's order?
We are reviewing all that and we anticipate that by the next council meeting, we will have some guidance and instructions as to the best approach for our public spaces, including this chamber.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. No objection. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.